This meeting of the Board of Education is called to order at 6:02 PM. Could we have roll please?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Bowles?
Here.
Mrs. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Thiede is excused. Mrs. Beard here. Mr. McLaughlin?
We could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a field trip. This got added to our agenda. I was contacted. This field trip, the person that submitted this field trip is the coordinator that works with our college initiatives at the high school. And being fair, isn't totally versed in the procedures and timelines we have for field trip notification. But if Board members recall, in the past, University of Toledo has sent up a chartered bus. It's actually a luxury bus they send up for our kids and take our kids down to tour University of Toledo campus. And that's what tonight's recommendation is that we approve. You have that sitting before you in your welcoming packet today. When the Board is ready, I entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approved the field trip to Toledo, Ohio on February 12th, 2013, for the 11th graders at Ramus High School to visit the campus of the University of Toledo as proposed at no cost to the school district.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Crowe, supported by Ms. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just looking, didn't see anything about how many chaperones are actually going to be attending.
Does not say. Can you?
Was it left blank? Is there a spot for it?
It doesn't say.
It's been whited out. Faculty members sponsoring, it looks like it's been whited out.
If you could get us that information, please.
I'll get that to that information. So the Board is asking that I ensure that we have appropriate staff for the students that we have.
Yeah, supervision.
It doesn't even really have the number of juniors that are actually attending as well, if I'm looking at this correct.
So they actually show up, they probably are using an estimate anyway.
Yeah, and usually what happens is one of our counselors goes and one of the placement people from Toledo comes up on the bus and goes down with them.
Okay.
Usually, but please if you can, if you can confirm, just send it to us and let us know. Any other questions?
Do we know if University of Toledo is offering us like in-state tuition?
Yes, they are. They no longer charge out-of-state tuition for Michigan. That happened after my son completed.
I know, right?
That is a really nice plus.
It is, and it's a wonderful school. And I think we can, we can take some partnerships real far with University of Toledo. They've been very kind and generous to our students, actually. They actually have a nice pharmacy camp program that some of our kids have participated in, including mine.
My nephew is there now?
Oh, is he? Cool.
Captain of the vessel.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion carries six and zero. With that, Mrs. Peck, you are politely excused, so you may enjoy your evening.
So appreciate it. You don't need me anymore.
Yeah, you're heartbroken, I'm sure. Do you want to sit up here so you don't? That way you can just use that mic and you don't have to stand and hold a mic. You can just use that mic. You don't have to sit there. That's the danger seat. If you want to sit up here, you can. I don't bite.
All the way up if you want.
I don't bite, because that one's the danger seat, because it's right by the ramp there.
I've been warned about that.
The next item on the agenda, and this is more for the viewing audience that will be watching, Marie Miller, our Superintendent Search Consultant with Michigan Association of School Boards, is here to give us an update on where we are with the community meetings and the survey that was conducted online. With that, Marie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. I'm glad to be back. To give a quick update, I'd like to go over the community meetings and staff meetings. Although they were not, I'd say, well-attended, the people that were there were very interested.
I'm sorry, Marie. Can I interrupt you for one second?
You certainly may.
There was something I did want to stay state, kind of for the record. There's been some criticism about the meetings and the input and things. There was an extensive public relations campaign that was put out regarding the Superintendent search. There was a press release sent, and it was run in the Detroit Free Press, it was run in the Downriver News Herald, it was run in the Romulus News, it was run in the Telegram newspaper, it was on Facebook under multiple screen names and accounts, it was on multiple email blasts, there were two robocalls done out to every parent in the school district, school newsletters, district websites, some personal websites that I'm aware of, and the criticisms that, and it was posted on every building, it was on the signs in front of the high school, the digital sign that was there, and the implication that-
There was personal phone calls as well.
There was personal phone calls as well, there was church bulletins. The implication that this district, by and through this Board of Education, did not advertise those community meetings or make them at times people were not available to attend is blatantly false, wrong, accusatory, and not tolerable. Just wanted that for the record, so everybody out there in TV land can hear that. Stop blowing up Rob's phone, stop blowing up my email. This was communicated. Sorry. Thank you.
As I said, we had a relatively light turnout for those meetings, primarily community members. Those that were there were appreciative of the opportunity. Some attended the meetings that were established basically for staff meetings because they couldn't make one of the others. So, you know, we had varied times. So, the information I shared in with the report to the Board, and we'll basically just cover that in gen, for the audience as well as for the Board, that the first part of the meetings went over the process for the search, and one of the things that I'd like to encourage the community members is that to attend the actual interviews, and that at that point, although they are not part of the interview panel, community members who are present, staff members who are present at the interviews, will have the opportunity to submit written questions if they have questions for the candidates, and that the Board will ask as time allows. They'll also have the opportunity to comment on the strengths of the candidates based on the interviews. So there will be opportunities for additional community input. What I'd like to say on the other side of that is, I've done several searches, and oftentimes the community has not come to the search meetings, they come to the Board meetings, you know, and get their information there. And in some of those cases, because we've actually done some follow-ups to ask why people weren't there, and they said that they trusted the members of the Board that they had elected to represent them, and that, you know, they felt that they were in good hands in terms of setting the criteria. So, that may be the thought that's behind, you know, the light turnout for the meetings. But one of the things I can tell you is that the people that did attend, and although it was few in number, were very passionate about Romulus, very proud of Romulus and want Romulus to continue to succeed and exceed the standards, proud of the fact that it's multi-generational, proud that it is very diverse, and that there's opportunity for growth in Romulus still. So, those are the, some of the high points. Some of the critical issues that were, again, expressed by a few, is that, and that's not necessarily that there's a problem in the district, it's just that those things out on the horizon, you know, for example bullying, as it is a concern in all schools, and they believe that it will continue to be a concern for Romulus as well as other districts, budget and financial considerations, so no surprises there. And, again, that they believe a critical issue is a standard for achievement. So, those are the things that the, you know, community is looking for, the new Superintendent to take a look at, that, you know, within this shrinking dollars, that they'll have to do more, and that they want, you know, the best possible programs that can be offered. And there is a number of competencies, so very few, you know, there are only about eight people at the meetings, but they had a long list of the things that they wanted, you know, the Superintendent to have. Interestingly enough, although it's not, you know, the response from the community is not statistically reliable because it's so few, but it's not that far from what the Board established on your individual profiles. So, at least everybody is looking at the same and in sync. So with that thought, you also have a series of the online, and that, again, was a light turnout for an online survey. We usually see more. Can't answer as to why, because we only had seven responses there. It was up for an extended use, a little bit longer than it normally is, so, in fact, we left it a few days even after that deadline to see if there were more responses. But the Board members have that information, again, came from very few individuals, so some of those comments may not necessarily be reflective of the community at large. Those are individual opinions, and there isn't a big enough pool to generalize those comments. So, with that being said, this evening, you have before you also a composite of the Board profile. And this has been a unique search so far for me, in terms of, I have not had the opportunity of having a Board so uniform in terms of doing individual responses, that you were pretty close on what you were looking for in a Superintendent, where you have, you know, where you intend to go as a district, which I think is reflective of the fact that the Board does have a vision for Romulus, and you kind of know, basically, what kind of leader you're looking for. Where there was some disparity in terms of what individual Board members were looking for was in the education level. It ranked up from a doctorate down to a master's in the administrative certification endorsement. So, one of the things that we're going to do tonight is to set what the, are we missing one?
Nope.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Is to set what you want as a Board to set as your minimum qualifications. So, if we can go to the education level and talk about that first, based on the overall, would you be comfortable as a Board saying that the minimum would be a master's with administrative certification with a doctorate preferred? Okay, which means it leaves you both.
You're gonna let that play.
Okay. Now, in terms of the experience level, that's the biggest spread that we had. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Central Office, Building Principal, and Other. So there, my question is, what's clear to me is that you want someone with administrative experience?
I don't know that Building Principal is enough.
At least Assistant Superintendent.
I mean, I would think at least something in Central Office. You know, I-
Okay. Do you want to say a minimum of Central Office experience, or do you want to say Central Office experience preferred?
Well, given the fact that, you know, where we're gonna be having the conversa, the con, I'm sorry, the conversation regarding compensation in a few minutes, we may need to keep the window open, and basically maybe say-
At least Building Principal.
At least Building Principal.
Okay.
Central Office preferred, and that way it gives us the most flexibility and gives you the most flexibility, you know, in screening candidates.
How about, um-
Does everybody agree with that?
And you, do you want K-12 experience? Public K-12?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that better.
So what if we said public K-12 administrative experience Superintendent preferred? Is that what you said, preferred?
Well, I said Central Office preferred.
I wanna say at least, well, okay.
Well, we have to understand, especially with the salary schedule we're talking about, we might get somebody right out of college with certification.
Central Office.
That's just looking for their first superintendency. And that might be a superstar. We don't know that until we go through the interview process.
Right.
You know, everybody started out somewhere. I, you know-
I know. So would we say for least public education, K through 12?
K-12 public school administration.
Central Office preferred.
Okay.
Right. Is everybody on board with that?
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Or you want Superintendent?
Central Office you says preferred.
Preferred.
And K through 12.
You're looking for someone with some kind of administrative K-12 experience.
Yes.
And again, if the applications come in and you have an applicant that doesn't have administrative experience, but, you know, everything else looks like it's exactly what the Board wants, you still have the opportunity to interview that person and make that. So these aren't, these are guidelines, and, you know, we'll try and stake to the guidelines, but if there's something that comes up, as Mr. McLaughlin just said, that, you know, came out a superstar with no experience, the Board still has that option to consider that.
What is your, what is your experience as far as, for the preferred, using Central Office versus Superintendent? I mean-
Well, what Central Office would do is kind of form a larger net for you, because it could be someone who was a curriculum director in a large district who might, or someone who had some Central Office experience in a smaller district, who wore many hats but never had the title of an Assistant Superintendent, because the titles, you know, varied from district to district.
And some districts just flat out don't have Assistant Superintendent.
Anymore.
Right.
And, you know, so, the Central Office and the type of experience that you're looking for there-
Sorry, Steve.
This would not preclude someone, you know, coming out of the business office then, also being considered. And there are, and that's another path to the superintendency for, in some cases, where someone will come up through the business office and, for example, a Director of Finance and move to the Superintendent, and they've been very successful. They usually have either a curriculum background or someone on their staff that has a strong curriculum background.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with that, Sean.
Okay.
Okay. Demographic, I think you were pretty clear, looking for someone with either urban or suburban.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was also, did anybody have any, under Other, did anybody have any specification of who that was, what that could be? Because I did, when I put that down, in my mind, I did. I thought it would be someone that's well-rounded with the kids, have had experience around kids, have had experience working in a school district, maybe as some sort of a teacher or somehow, and kind of worked their way up the ladder, so that they have an idea of what it's like to actually, actually be in a classroom and have the experience of being able to relate to the teachers as well, as also the Central Office as well. So that was my, my-
Oh, which you meant there?
Yes. That's how I looked at it when it said Other, since it didn't have anything else there. In my mind, that's how I took it. Someone that's well-rounded from the ground up.
Okay, then, let me kind of digress a little bit then. Is the Board looking for someone who has teaching experience?
I think we want more than that.
No, we want K-12 administrative.
No, no, no. In addition to, though, you could have someone who has K-12 administration who has never taught.
Right.
And if the Board has a preference for someone who has been in the classroom as a teacher at some point, then we can add that additionally, not, not taking that off. But that would be, you know, if teaching experience preferred-
I think it's, it's nice, yeah, they should have it, because they're gonna be in charge of them, and they need to know what that involves.
I agree, but, but the reason I, I did not say teacher is because if you've got someone that's been a teacher for, you know, I mean no disrespect to anybody in the teaching profession, but if they've been a teacher for 30 years, that does not necessarily make them administrator material.
But what if you read-
Nor, you know, they may be quote, "old school," and we need somebody that has the vision and, and the, the drive to be in the new school way of doing things.
No, but she's saying a administrator with teaching experience.
Who has been at some point, has had some kind of teaching experience.
In addition to, yeah, like they've progressed. Like they didn't start out as a principal, that they had the teaching before.
Yeah, but again, if you have a superstar that's, you know, come through, gone, and he's got a master's or a doctorate in public school administration and has done nothing but administrative duties, are we then precluding, precluding that applicant because they didn't serve as a teacher?
No, that's not what, that's not the way I took it. I took it as, this is somebody that has had experience at some, at some point in their career, working in a school district with children of some, whether it's K through, or whether it's kindergarten, so many years as a teacher, whether it's a high school teacher, they've had experience actually being in the classroom around the students themselves, so that pretty much they have a feel of how the classroom and how the kids are, so that they can relate to some of the experiences that some of the teachers are going through. You need someone that has that kind of experience, just like any other specification at any other place that you go to. They don't start at the top, sometimes when they're trying to find out what the problems are, what do they do? They go down to the bottom, to the people that work that job every day, and they say, "Hey, you work this job every day, you tell me, from your perspective, what needs to be changed." You need somebody that has that same kind of background, somebody that has experience talking to the teachers, have been in there, whether it be the first year, two, or two years, three years, whatever, has had that actual experience in a classroom to understand from their perceptions what they deal with on a daily basis, as well as someone that's worked in the Central Office.
So what was the wording that you're-
What would, what you could do is teaching experience preferred. Again, if it's a preference that they have some kind of teaching experience preferred.
I can live with, with adding that preferred in there, and that still leaves us the flexibility, because we don't know what this applicant pool's gonna look like, and to just close the door on, on somebody that may be-
Preferred. Preferred. Okay.
And some of these things, for example, the district size is not something that we normally will, like, someone has experience in a district size of, what you're saying is something similar to Romulus. It's not necessarily something we list as a criteria, it's just something that the Board will look at when the applications come in. So, looking for someone who has, what this says to me is your, your preference is someone who comes from a district very similar to Romulus.
Right.
In size, in demographics, in the number of buildings, those kind of things. The compensation, again, we'll leave open, because that's going to be dependent on the candidate you get and what the Board can afford, but, the Board was really close. In fact, I, everybody was within the same, you know, the majority was within the same compensation, so within that realm.
And that's where we're, it's safe to say, that's where we're gonna be.
Right, and you, you know, we'll post that at, at later as we get through the process. Exactly. And this next section is where you ranked high to low. Again, these six areas are all important, it's from the perspective of the expertise of what you're looking for in a Superintendent. What came in one overall from the Board was budget development and management, followed by someone with curriculum development and evaluation experience, followed by public relations. Four was personnel management. Five was contract negotiations. And six was experience in dealing with the contract and employee administration. So, again, looking for someone who has strengths primarily in the areas of budget and curricula are the two high points. And when we get to some wording, that's gonna be important to remember. The type of leadership is a dominant style. I think most people, especially most public school administrators, fall into one of these categories, and may vary between a couple of the categories on their experience. But for the most part, the Board is looking for a transformational leader, someone who's gonna inspire and the team to work with a shared vision. The second one was situational leadership, followed by collaborative leadership, and those were pretty, the three strongest rankings. In terms of the specialized skills, as a Board, how that played out was, number one was the ability to develop and direct an effective management team. Two, knowledge and experience in all financial matters. Three, visible and accessible to staff, students, and community. Four, public relations and media relations. Five, a community organization-oriented person. And six, excellent speaking skills with large and small groups. This will tie into the profile, but really where these areas are gonna come into play is when we start to establish our interview questions, because the questions will be designed in, to attempt to get the Board to have a good feeling for where the candidates lie and, and what their perspectives are in those areas. So this will help me as I help you develop the questions. And the personal characteristics, I think everybody agrees that we want everybody to have all of those characteristics, and, but, number one, honest and ethical. Two, a visionary, that visionary is coming in pretty strong. Three, problem solver. Four, a communicator. Five, someone who is resourceful. And six, someone who is personable. So, those are kind of where the, the rankings came from the Board. Again, reflective of the responses that we had back from the community, both in the written forum and in the forums, it's pretty close. So, that's a good thing, and it's helpful to know that you're looking for the same. So, kind of to aid us along, I think I had sent to the Board, and Ms. Colcides, I believe, put it in your packups for tonight too, so, basically, we've already talked about the minimum education level, of what we want your candidate to have, the experience level, we talked about that. And the type of experience, that's that K-12 public, Central Office experience. And the leadership style preference, which came out to be basically the transformational leader. So some of the wording that I'll be using here, and some of these came from the possibilities of what I thought would come out as the recommendations, both from the Board and the consensus of the Board and the community. So, we talked about the K-12 public school administrative experience, Central Office preferred, preferably someone who also has teaching experience. Then, as we go through, we could go through, and I kind of did the, one, two, three, fourth bullet point down, a proven track record of successfully serving as an effective collaborative leader in a transformational environment. I tried to take the two and put them together. It works, so, you know, if you're comfortable with that. Proven track record of directing an effective management team while using a variety of methods to keep the Board informed. So I was kind of bolting them. Experienced in finance, budget development and management, personnel management, public relations, curriculum development and evaluation. Someone who's visible, approachable, and accessible to staff, students, and community. An excellent communicator with strong speaking and listening skills. A strong leader, a decisive decision-maker who is forward-thinking and a visionary. Kind of, that was my alternative to the proven track record. An individual who puts children first, a leader who is a problem solver and resourceful. A person who is honest and ethical, we can list that if, if you're comfortable with that. However, I don't know that anybody is ever going to say that they're not honest and not ethical. You know, those we find out through the reference checks and through, you know, through their record. record more than anything else.
I agree.
Because sometimes, sometimes Board members want that in there, so we put it. And the last one is kind of a repeat of one on the front, just different wording.
I like your alternative wording.
The alternative? Okay, let me go through the alternative. The Romulus Community School Board, Schools Board of Education seeks an experienced visionary leader to be its next superintendent. The successful candidate will be a leader who inspires his or her team with a shared vision of the future and leads by using consensus building and other group processes to arrive at mutually beneficial decisions. The district would like a candidate with a minimum education level of a master's degree in administrative certification with proven success as a, I may have to change that. As a...
K-12 publication and...
K-12 public...
Administration.
Administration. Central office preferred.
Teaching experience preferred.
And then, K-12 teaching experience preferred. And I'll wordsmith that a little bit. And then, do you want any of those descriptors that I listed on the front page? Because we can do that. The key descriptors of a desirable candidate include, or we can skip that piece.
Well, you already have, you know, you've already kind of stated most of those in there. I mean, an individual who puts children first, I mean, seriously, you know, that's something that...
Should happen.
And if it doesn't, it'll come out through the interview process.
Are you comfortable with just that wording then? Okay, then that's what we'll use as the profile. That will be added to the...
Is there any way that you could put in, fit in that transformational environment?
I can.
Since we are in the midst of changes.
I can.
From the first page.
Yeah, just those two words somehow fitted into the description.
I will.
Wow, this is going to go on for two months.
It is. It is. I will tell you that I've had several phone, so if that, let me back up one step. This will go up, should be up on the website where we've posted everything by tomorrow, by the end of the day tomorrow, tomorrow's Thursday, let's say by Friday morning, in case Kelly isn't in the office. So that people will now have, because we've posted the position. I have had several phone calls from potential candidates who have contacted me, who I will be speaking with after tonight's meeting, that they'll either be calling me back or I'll be calling them, depending on where they were on my, what we agreed on in the list. Because what they wanted to know is what kind of leader, what kind of experience is Romulus looking for? And as I told them, it was early, didn't have that information for them, I would have it after tonight's meeting. There are people already applying, so there are some potential applicants already in the process of submitting those applications. So that's, that's an early submission. Some of those people may look at the criteria and say, "I want to pull it back," or "I want to go forward." But right now, the Board has at least four candidates. So, or four applicants, I'm sorry, not candidates, applicants. So over the next two, almost two months, you're right, I will be in contact primarily with the Board via email, but I will keep you updated in terms of the applications that, you know, how we are progressing. What we'll also be doing is sending out an invitation to the match, to any people who have applied in terms of the bank, of people who've said they're interested in becoming a superintendent or being a superintendent, that this may be a potential match for them. So we'll look for the same kind of criteria. And an email invitation will come out to them, directing them to the posting with all of the information, again, saying, please, you know, consider the, consider your application. But this is kind of the quiet time for the Board. The next time we meet, which is April 15, will be after the close, just as a reminder that the close is April 4th at noon. So I would say by 2:00 on April 4th, Board members will have access to all of the applications, all of the material. Just a reminder again, that it is confidential information. The Board, at that point, individual Board members cannot release any information, so it is strictly for your information only. What we'll get together and the district will put out a news release at the time of the closing. And what we normally put out so that the public is informed and out to the staff, because staff always has those questions also, is the number of applicants, kind of basically whether there, there are any internal, like if there are five internal and 10 external, we'll do that, and usually go as far as saying if there are any out-of-state candidates. And other than that, that's all the information we will make public. The rest of the information will be for the Board on April 15. And I don't know that we've set a time for that meeting yet.
I don't know that we've set a specific date, but I think that was the target date for a meeting. I don't, yeah, we haven't actually set that date in stone. It was just in the timeline. If you want, we can set it now.
Okay.
If you're absolutely sure we're going to be ready for that, then, because that's an off Monday, we can do 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Does that work with everybody, as far as everybody knows? April 15. April 29, that's our regular...
April 29 was going to be the beginning, the week of April 29 was the beginning of the interviews.
I had April 15 down already.
Yeah, I had it down.
Okay.
And just because I saw it somewhere else, I'm going to change the subject for a second, but April 11 is M.A.S.B. awards night.
Really?
Yeah.
April 11?
April 11 for Wayne County at Allen Park.
Thank you.
What's that usually at 6:00, right? At 6:00 o'clock usually, right?
Yeah.
Yes, please. And Marie, just so that you're aware, I had said that the week of May 20 was going to be an issue. Wrong. Make, the week of May 13.
Okay. Okay.
M.I.C. See you soon. K.E.Y. What? Because I want to.
Okay, so May 13 is a bad week.
Yes.
And we'll set that after the first set of interviews anyways, because again, you may not need a second set of interviews. The Board may find a candidate with the first set of interviews. But I'll note that in my calendar, and everybody else can kind of start looking at their calendar for those days. But hopefully by May 13, we may have a superintendent in place.
Wouldn't hurt my feelings. Anybody have any other questions?
Just trying to make sure we got all our dates down.
Yeah, April 29 is...
Isn't that a regular board meeting?
No, that's, that would be the 22nd.
Oh, yes.
April 29 is scheduled to be the first interview.
April 1st is the first one.
And then, April 1, I'm sorry, May 1st and 2nd are possible dates, depending upon how many interviews we schedule.
Correct.
And those interviews, when it gets a little closer, Board members will, will negotiate about what time we can start, but since we don't want to be here until midnight, we might have to adjust the starting time and see what the earliest, the absolute earliest Board members can be present. And if it's 5, then it's 5. But, you know, that, when it gets a little closer, we'll have those conversations.
Right, so on the April 15, you'll be screening the applicants. I'll also be talking, beginning talking with the Board about potential questions for the interviews, so they'll kind of piggyback those together so that you have fewer meetings to go to. But hopefully we'll get through, and what I'll do is have some sample questions for you, and then you can, again, select from those.
Now, there's some, some legal parameters we have to stay in with regard to those questions. You know, in one of your communications, will you remind, remind Board members...
I will.
Of what those parameters are?
I will.
You can't ask certain things.
And you'll, and as I said, you'll be hearing from me kind of, as, I'm not really going away anywhere, so I'll still be available and, but you'll be hearing from me, and I'll be referring you back to that guidebook that you've got electronically, so you're going to be getting some homework. One of the first assignments will be to go through the part that talks about how to screen an application, and I'll send those specific pages to, you know, which pages to go back to, so that you'll be ready prior to the April 4 date and be able to take and move that right through for yourself.
Is that in, is it in the thing already?
In the guidebook already, yes.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a question in regards to the, just for the marketing area. Can you tell me if letters were actually sent home to parents in regards to reminding them about the meetings that were set up? Would you know that information?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Because I, I didn't handle that piece of it.
And in regards to the, in regards to the robocall, can you tell me, the reason why I'm asking is because I had some parents that were complaining to me as well about the robocall. They took it as it was just for your own information, we're going to be looking for a superintendent, we're replacing a superintendent. And they stated, I asked them, did the robocall state specifically that you are invited to come out to the meeting? We're looking for parents to come out to the meeting to get involved in regards to the superintendent search? And I was told no.
They were not being truthful with you. I recorded that, I recorded that robocall.
Well, do you have it so that we can listen to it?
The script is probably on my computer.
I would love for you to send it to me, please.
We invited people to the meeting, and that robocall went out twice to every registered phone number we have on our school database.
Okay.
And as far as the letters going home, it was in school newsletters. We did not mail anything home. The cost was way too prohibitive.
Okay, but I know that we normally mail things home, or let the pa, or actually, they send information home in regards to when there's half-days and things like that to remind, remind the parents.
And even those publications that were...
And so, I would, I would have thought that by this being so important as it is, that that would have been one of the things that was done as well, because of how important this, this specific thing, event is that we're dealing with today, just to make sure that all areas are covered and that people can't come back and say anything like that. So that was my reasoning for bringing that up. And I would really appreciate if you could, if you could email me that script that, that tells me exactly what was said.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, I'll have you on a send that voice recording to you.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm writing down a note. Any other questions about the superintendent, uh, search for Ms. Miller? No? Well, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Marla.
Drive safe. Well, that's right, you're vocal. I'm thinking M.A.S.B., Lansing. Okay, the next item is communications and expressions from the public. Ms. Williams, did you have anything?
No.
You good to go?
Not a special answer.
Okay. There's nothing under other Board members, questions or concerns of Board members? We'll start with Ms. Bowles, do you have anything?
None at the, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowe?
Nothing.
Mrs. Spunderberg?
Nope, not at this time.
Ms. Buckley, sorry.
No.
No? Mrs. Beard?
Nothing at this time.
Um, I have two things, but I'll discuss them after the meeting. Uh, that would be it. Do we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm a little bit late there.
It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by, I'm sorry, Mrs. Crowe?
No.
Oh, Mrs. Spunderberg, sorry. To adjourn? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 6:47. Thank you, everybody.